Yes.
President?
Here.
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 Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon.
On this cool day in Columbia.
Good day to be inside.
Burning up. So, we have a few items, starting with Ms. Alonso's financial report. If you have any questions, she's here to answer those for you. Your Benjamin, I apologize, we didn't do an invocation, so.
Reverend?
Would you please? Just by head. Lord, for the beauty of this day and for all of the activities you've allowed us to endeavor ourselves this day. Lord, we pray for this city of ours, for those of us who sit around the table to hear and to make decisions that are viable for the health of this community. Plus, and in addition, we pray for this nation of ours. We pray for the children. We pray for families. We pray for situations that are in crisis. We simply ask that you might touch and energize and yet sensitize us to your will and to your way. Allow persons who are standing in blistering heat, allow them to sense and feel today that a group of us are remembering the crisis. We ask it in your name.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend.
Yes, sir.
Any questions regarding our April 2018 financial report?
Nope.
Seeing none, our first council discussion and then two after that sent around our homeless services, coordinated services with three providers. They always are gracious to come and give us some presentations as we start a new fiscal year. And the first is the Regional Homeless Coordinator Services and Regional Incliment Weather Center. Ms. Jennifer Moore, Senior Director for Financial Stability Council for the United Way of the Midlands.
Hey, Jennifer.
Good afternoon. All right, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, it's so wonderful to be here with you today. What we wanted to do is give you a little bit of an update on the Incliment Weather Center contract and also regional contract for coordination of homeless services. So, we're going to walk you through a few slides, but if you have any questions, please let us know. We've been really fortunate and grateful to work with the city in partnership to address homelessness and also with some really amazing partners, which many are here today. So, thank them for also being here. All righty. So, overview, there's actually two contracts. One is for direct services, and that is for operations of the Incliment Weather Center, which provides sheltering for homeless adults from November to March when it's 40 degrees and below. We work with different partners there, and we'll talk about that. And then also, street outreach for people who are on the streets that we're trying to engage in care. The second contract is our regional contract, and that is systems coordination and service coordination. So, we'll talk a little bit about both of those. So, first, we want to give you a snapshot of kind of where we are in homelessness here in the central Midlands. So, we were really fortunate that during our annual count that we do at the end of January, we've had some pretty steep declines. So, from 2013 to 2008, we had about eight to nine percent decreases per year. You can see from 2013 to 2008, which was a 40% total decrease. But what we found this past year, from 2017 to 2018, our numbers basically were unchanged. So, we basically had leveled out this current year. And when we look at our Incliment Weather Center numbers, we were higher in our unduplicated headcount this year. So, that's something that we're looking at so that we can analyze the trends there. You can see, we've also had historically steep declines in homelessness among our veterans. We have a deep partnership working with VA and other service providers to implement that work. We've been very aggressive in trying to secure new housing and street outreach for youth. And when we speak about youth, we're talking about 17- to 24-year-olds. And we're really targeting that population because we really want to end the cycle of homelessness very quickly for young people before they become long-term chronically homeless people on the streets, which is some of the issues that we're seeing currently right now.
Have you seen any decline in the chronic? Because that seems to be the population that
Mm-hmm.
creates most of the issues for both residents and...
We'll talk about that. We're pretty, we've dipped a tiny bit with chronic, but we're kind of holding steady with the chronic number.
Jennifer, the homeless, the veteran numbers, in real numbers, what do those look like?
About 155 this current year is what we counted. And so, that obviously has come down quite a bit. And we've been working, of course, like I said, very closely with the VA. So, we have a monthly case conferencing meeting with the Dorn VA staff. As someone on the streets self-identifies as a veteran, we actually work with the VA to verify that they do have eligibility for services to try to connect them for that very specialized housing. The one thing that's, we're fortunate with veteran homelessness is that is frankly the one place in the federal government that they have been very supportive with new resources. And we are very fortunate that our Columbia Housing Authority, which is amazing, has about 450 units of housing specific to veterans who are homeless. And so, that's really helped us dip that number down over the past five years. All right, so the Incliment Weather Center, so we work with some really great partners. So, Transitions, the Midlands Housing Alliance, is our primary entity that does the day-to-day operations of the center. We work with the Salvation Army of the Midlands for the evening and the breakfast meal. And then we have private vendors that do security for us and transportation services. And we do, transportation is required because the location, the Incliment Weather Center, we frankly don't want people crossing UG Street at night. So, we do pick up at the, oh, at the Clean of Hearts location, which is by the new Metro Police Station, which, by the way, we love that location. So, talk about the summary real quick of the IWC. So, this year, we had 67 nights of shelter compared to 65 last night or last year. That included one night that Transitions did extend their hours in their day center for hurricane event. Not to mention the countless nights that they provided additional shelter in their lobby and other spaces just to get folks out of the elements when it was not quite the temperature-ready, below 40, but there were some severe weather incidents. We were budgeted for 80 nights. This year's headcount of unduplicated clients was 890 individuals. And again, these are adults without children. That compares to 750 from the previous year. So, you can see our unduplicated count did tick up a bit. So, that resulted in unduplicated or duplicated nights of shelter of about 8,700 compared to 6,300 last year. So, we did tick up quite a bit. That did have a bit of an impact on the budget, so we became very close on our meal budget just simply because of the higher headcount. Our average per night also increased. So, we were at 154 this year compared to 98 last year. 98 had ticked down a bit. We were about 130 the year before that. So, we did kind of tick down, and then we've ticked back up apparently. And what's really kind of troubling to us is that we show that 55%, so over half of the clients have a disabling condition, and many have more than one. And so, permanent housing placement that they can sustain on their own tends to be very difficult for us, especially with the severe limitations that we have of permanent supportive housing. And that's housing that is very specialized. It's typically federally funded, and it would be a voucher attached with case management. And that's what Kristin's group does with USC Supportive Housing. They provide the case management element to some federally funded vouchers of the Columbia Housing Authority. And then we had 35 nights. Yes, sir.
What's the, what's the policies for TRR services? How do we bring that into focus? What do we, what do we do? What has been done? Perhaps it's further down.
Yeah, well, we'll talk about our outreach efforts, but just briefly, a couple things. So, to be screened for our very limited federal housing options and a bit broader array of services, we have a two-tier process. So, one is a very brief screening that really anyone can do, just getting basic demographic information and what the situation is. And then we have a little bit longer vulnerability assessment that we screen people for housing. And what we're trying to do is to get the folks that have the highest interactions with service systems, whether it be hospital systems, justice systems, who have a high vulnerability health-wise, to try to get those folks prioritized for housing first so that we can get those folks off the streets. That's basically how it works, and we'll talk about street outreach in a second. That help?
So, once that, once that two-pronged process is taken, taken into consideration and you've done it, the next step, of course, possibly is referral?
Correct. So, referral out to appropriate services. And for each client, that's very different. So, sometimes it is a referral to housing. We operate a prioritization of housing for people who are most vulnerable, again, with those very high service interactions. So, those folks are prioritized for housing. But oftentimes, for folks that have a very challenging history or a challenging approach to reaching them for services, sometimes it takes several different providers getting involved to coordinate here. Okay, so, on the Incliment Weather Center, about a quarter of our folks had positive exits. And so, again, that is about 172 that were placed in emergency shelter. Most of those were at Transitions. Many others were engaged with services with other agencies. We had nine that were placed into permanent housing. But really, the issue that we have, going back to more than half of the clients have a disabling condition, it's just very hard to find housing that they can afford or housing that meets their needs because these are folks typically that need long-term voucher assistance and case management attached to it in the form of permanent supportive housing. Questions on the IWC? So, the regional contract, we wanted to back up just a second and give you a little bit of an overview of our United Way work in general about homelessness and then take a deep dive into the regional work itself. So, we are the lead at United Way for our local homeless coalition, which is MOC, the Midlands Area Consortium for the Homeless. And really, what that means is that we have a key role in coordination of services and planning across different agencies. So, whether it be our partners with the City of Columbia's regional contract of services, but really, a vast array of public and private entities in the community really trying to work on systems change and also to address those gaps that we have in housing and services and making sure that we're really connecting all the pieces together. We also secure resources. So, we coordinate an annual application to HUD. That's about $3.1 million per year. That brings in resources for permanent supportive housing and other types of housing services. And then at United Way, we invest over $1 million to provide matching funds primarily for those federal resources. We conduct the annual point-in-time count, which is the snapshot that we do every January, and that was that number that I said that was basically unchanged to the, kind of that entry slide. But that's where we train volunteers and we deploy them into the community to do a very in-depth survey that we de-duplicate so that we can really look at trends of homelessness over time. But again, it is a snapshot. It does tend to over-represent populations, typically single individuals that we encounter on the streets. It does do, I would say, a vast undercount of families with children because those tend to be in doubled-up situations, and we don't have enough sheltering resources for them. So, it is a little bit of a skewed count, but it is one lens that we look at to analyze homelessness. We also operate the Homeless Management Information System. So, HMIS is our database that we use. So, if you are in a shelter, that's how we record your shelter stay. If case managers put case management notes, that's how we make referrals across agencies. And that's how really agencies can track the history of a client through the system so that they can really understand the full picture. We also do homeless research. So, for example, right now, we are working on a youth study. So, again, that cohort of 17- to 24-year-olds, we are matching HMIS data to public, our state public data warehouse at Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. So, we are looking at things like juvenile justice involvement, foster care enrollment of young people who've experienced homelessness so that we can better understand that path of homelessness so that we can target those system and service interventions that are needed. And then also, system performance evaluation. So, we use the information in HMIS to really get a picture of how our system is functioning. And so, we can look at first-time homelessness on an annualized basis. We can look at returns of homelessness so that we can see how many people exit successfully to housing but then cycle back through the system in a six-month or 24-month period. We can also look at things like street outreach. We can look at the successful housing placements of those street outreach workers, which I've always said is the hardest job in the world, being a street outreach worker, due to get people into housing. So, that's the big picture. Our team that works on homelessness at United Way, we have a six-member team that is funded. We have about a position and a half that are funded through the city regional contract. The rest are funded through three federal grants that we have. So, we do have different roles for different folks, but we all are very interconnected. So, diving into the regional contract specifically. So, I was here back in March talking about meal share coordination. So, I'm happy to kind of look at any questions that you have there. But we have been fortunate that we've had the new guidelines up and running for Finley Park for about two months now, and that was where we truncated the slots for the meal share. So, for example, before on Saturday or Sunday, you could basically apply for a permit of really any time that you wanted. Now, we have a breakfast, lunch, and a dinner slot. And then if folks want to provide, you know, services or meals in addition to that, then they partner with one of the lead agencies. So, again, that's been up and running for just under two months, but we've been really, really pleased with that. We've been working on employment coordination. So, we worked with Richland Library to host this year's second Breaking Barriers event. So, this is an event really to target folks who are homeless that have background issues. So, whether it's criminal, credit issues that prevents them from getting employment. So, we had 163 people at this event. From that, we had 13 that gained employment, 11 that enrolled in the Do Workforce Investment Act program. And then we had 19 that attended an expungement workshop with Appleseed, and we paid for sled checks that we did on-site so that folks could understand really what's on their records.
Is this the one Sewell Gilbert's been working with you on?
I'm sorry?
Sewell Gilbert. Sewell's been working?
Yes. Yep. We also work on landlord coordination. So, we've had a couple lease-up events with the Columbia Housing Authority, and we have a landlord leadership team. And the purpose here really is to win over landlords and to help them look past barriers. And so, when an individual or family is looking to rent and they have those blemishes, whether, again, credit or criminal background, to really just give them a chance for housing. The other thing that we did with a small pilot program with United Way Resources is we started the Peace of Mind Fund. And the Peace of Mind Fund is basically a risk mitigation fund. So, if a landlord is very hesitant to release, to lease to someone, then this is kind of an extra security blanket, an extra dollar amount that they can tap into if there's damages. And we've had really good success with this program, and I'm happy to report we've had no claims so far. The other thing is our youth and transition work. So, again, looking at our young people, 17- to 24. Again, over the last four years, we've added 78 new units of housing and services, including dedicated street outreach. In addition to that, we were able to tap into a private grant from BB&amp;T of $100,000 to target with our youth partners and also our family service providers to really help them kind of overcome barriers so they can kind of get to that next level as well. New this year, we started working with Homeless No More to do motel vouchers for unsheltered families with children. And these were families, we really wanted to target this program very specifically. And these are families that are either referred from United Way or identified by the police department either after hours or when the shelters are full. And it's a motel voucher just to get them off the streets. This program has helped six families, which equated to about 26 children that were in unsheltered situations. We're happy to report that of the six, then all are safely housed right now. So, three went to shelter spots when those shelter spots opened. Two went into rapid rehousing, and so that's basically a security deposit to get them back into housing. And one was able to find housing and sustain it on their own.
Jennifer?
Jennifer.
Yes.
Just a question on that. So, for the motel voucher programs, how much money goes into that? How much are you budgeting for that?
It's pretty small. It was $10,000 this year, and I think we reduced it a little bit because it had a fairly modest start. So, we reduced it a little bit, maybe to maybe $5,000 to $7,000 this year.
Because I would think, I mean, six families over a year, I hear a lot of families that end up. So, I would think that, and because of the lack of shelter, and I know now that Homeless No More and the family shelter are together, that hopefully will help. But I would think that that's certainly an unmet need in the past, and so, I would love to see that. But so, with that, $5,000, $10,000, does that include the case management for the families? And then how long do they follow the families?
It does. So, the processes, so primarily, the primary referral source is our, is the Columbia Police Department officers. This was something that we heard. We can be monthly outreach meetings with our street outreach workers, and CPD attends. And one of the things that we did hear is that was a gap, that officers were finding families with children, and they didn't, they didn't have resources. And so, that was a gap that we wanted to address this past year, and we wrote, we wrote that in with resources. I will say that at United Way, we also fund motel vouchers. Again, it's a modest pot of money. To be perfectly honest, those funds can go just so incredibly quickly. It's a delicate balance between satisfying those basic needs and then longer-term issues like housing that we can put money into. But the basic process here, so CPD identifies someone. Homeless No More has a relationship with a very specific motel. There's paperwork at the front desk that the officer completes, leaves it there. A referral is made to Homeless No More, which does a triage, because again, they're, they're together now, which is amazing. And so, family shelter would do the initial triage. If space is available there, they would be issued a spot there or, you know, one of our very limited other options, like maybe family promise. Or they could be screened for other things like St. Lawrence Place or the Rapid Rehousing Program that's operated also by Homeless No More.
So, so that's the case management piece?
Yes.
And so, six families, $5,000?
Yeah, they're not, they're not quite spent down. It was a bit of a slow start, so that's why we kind of reduced it a little bit. So, they'll, they'll probably spend out maybe not quite all of that money this year. We'll have a little bit left over.
How do you determine? Excuse me. How do you determine the specific hotel you're going to be referring to?
The hotel?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, the specific hotel?
Yeah, how do you determine that? Is there a list of hotels?
No, it's...
Or is it geographic?
No, there's one specific hotel that's pretty centrally located, and Homeless No More develops a full relationship with them. I guess it's maybe surprising or not, but it's kind of hard to get hotels to work with you on something like this, like a voucher program, because they don't know, you know, they're suspect that you're not going to pay the bill, first of all. But they're also, you know, cautious about who you may be putting into the unit. So, Homeless No More worked with, reached out to many different hotels, but found one that was going to be a partner in the program.
What are the boundaries?
It is in City of Columbia. Wasn't it John?
So, it doesn't extend beyond the bridges?
No, sir, no. No, it's just, it's just Columbia CPD referrals is what it is. We, there has, there has frankly been interest from other jurisdictions, and we said that we would be more than welcome to accept resources to do that. Yeah.
Jennifer, and I want you to finish your presentation too, but I want to get this question in.
No, this is good.
You're on deck first, so I have the same question I'm going to ask all of your counterparts as well. So, wonderful work. Let me just say that upfront, always. Partnership has been going on for many years now. Million dollars that this council has committed for multiple years. These programs, everything that y'all are doing, the data that you presented suggests that homelessness is decreasing in Columbia. You know my pushback. We've had this conversation. To me, these things that you're presenting are working for those individuals who want the services. Hard question, what do we do? And what are we doing for the individuals who don't seem to want it? So, when we are now facing, and, and I'm just, I'm saying this because this is a daily, if not multiple times a day discussion that I'm having with business owners and residents and our police chief. We're, we are, from the city's perspective, about to have to engage in some other type alternatives downtown in particular and resources that are going to be visible to people that I'm not particularly excited about maybe having to do. But the aggressive behaviors, when we, I mean, not a day goes by, and I'm being dead serious on this, including last night with my daughter. If we're approached by someone and we try to help humanly, provide all of the resources that y'all are outlining, and someone says, "Well, I don't want that. I've been there, I've done that, this guy and the other," or "I'm not from here." What are we doing or what are we going to present in this year's fiscal year to do something just a little bit differently to help provide and make a difference in that regard?
And I love a perfect segue. Okay.
Wasn't planned.
It wasn't. It wasn't rehearsed. So, motel vouchers were new this year as we saw an emerging need. The other thing new that we're proposing for next year is to expand a travel voucher program. So, at United Way, we have been funding a travel voucher program for probably about a decade through our partners at Salvation Army. And this is if someone is stranded here to help them with gas money or a bus ticket to get back to their home community. What we do have proposed in our renewal request is to expand that, working with Transitions, to offer that same service, that if someone has a home community that they can return to and they're physically and medically able to travel on their own, is to provide that voucher for them. So, that's one thing. I want to talk about street outreach real quick. So, we have worked coordinating street outreach for several years now. About a year or so, we started working with the Solicitor's Office. The Solicitor's Office had a listing of individuals that had very high frequency of justice interactions. And our purpose there really initially started with our street outreach workers because we really wanted to kind of match those individuals with services when we could. What we've done most recently is we've expanded that partnership. And so, we have worked with Columbia Police Department, specifically the metro and the north regions, to identify a small number of individuals that have frequent justice interactions, law enforcement interactions. We've also are working with the City Center Partnership, the Public Defender's Office, and of course, the Solicitor's Office to really link those individuals to services. This is a pretty complex list of individuals. The purpose here, so, so all the partners have a little bit different purpose, but we are coordinating together. Our purpose here is to screen for housing. So, when we started looking at the list, we found that most of these individuals, to your point, do not seek sheltering. These are the folks who are not necessarily going to Transitions, even though Transitions is full every day. These are folks that at times will come to the Incliment Weather Center, but not always unless it's very cold. So, we wanted to screen them for housing because what we were finding is that these were folks that were scoring very high on that vulnerability screening tool that we talked about earlier, and that's how you get into those voucher programs. The other thing is to connect people to services, because we did find that, that several or many people on the list were disassociated from providers in general. And that, we think that's from various, lots of different reasons. These are people who might have cycled in and out of programs over a long period of time and maybe had become disassociated or just dissatisfied with the system. And so, we wanted to reignite and re-energize those connections to providers. And then also, to decrease the frequency of repeat offenses. And so, a couple examples. We have, we're working currently with the Public Defender's Office. So, we have a PD who has, someone who has frequent interactions with justice systems who's coming up for trial and could not be located. And so, we would put an alert out to our street outreach workers to see if we could find this individual so that we could get her to her court date. We had another individual who came up on that prioritized housing list, and our housing provider could not find the individual. Well, come to find out, he was in Alvin Esquelin the entire time that we were looking for him. So, this was very clear to us that we had to increase those, those connections. We're also talking with Alvin Esquelin to, we've had a couple meetings with them to also increase that partnership there so that if we have someone who even though may not be currently associated with a service provider or a housing provider that is detained, that we can possibly get out there and do an assessment on the individual. The list itself is 74 individuals, and you can see, we've only had this up and running for less than six months. 12 are housed, 42, we've been able to screen for supportive services, and that's that vulnerability housing assessment. And we have 45 actively engaged with street outreach.
My, my understanding is there's about 350, what you would categorize as chronic homeless in our community. And obviously, a portion of those are more aggressive.
More challenging, yes.
More challenging. What other options do we have? We can't force them into programs.
Right.
We can't push them into housing. But we have to do something that is clearly to change the culture of what's happening because it's affecting our residents, our patrons, our business people, our visitors. We're getting more and more increasingly phone calls than I've ever seen before. And the population... And the population seems to be shrinking, but this population doesn't seem to.
Yeah, so let, let me talk about why the number, it, it is about three hundred or so that's chronically homeless. Uh, seventy-four, we, we had an initial list again from north region, south region from CPD, uh, public defender solicitor, city center partnership, and there was some overlap. So we wanted to, to duplicate that list, or, I mean, you would expect overlap with that. Um, and then we wanted to contain the list. So, uh, really to try to focus efforts on this initial cohort of people. I, I can tell you that every person on this list is a very challenging situation. Two things. So an example of one thing that we're doing now with one individual who's on the list is we are engaging, um, probably about six different service providers, um, including the public defender's office, uh, to get a, a, a very well-known person, um, uh, into more stable housing currently. And it is, um, very staff intensive, um, because it is, it is very Plan A, Plan B. When those things don't work out, then we're going to try Plan C. Um, so that's one example. Um, the other thing is that, you know, really, I think regionally, this is a very challenging thing to say, but I think the lack of resources that we have for mental health in our community, um, paired with the lack of permanent supportive housing is, is going to be a real challenge for us. So we do have excellent mental health providers with Mercy and the Palmetto Health Act team. But I think that we could push for additional resources from other municipalities.
Folks who don't want that help, that's our challenge. I mean, uh, you know, I don't think there's a lack of resources in our community. I don't believe that. And I think we've seen it for a long time. What I see is that we've got a, um, a group of folks that we can't force legally or any other way into taking advantage of this. But they are creating issues that are public safety issues and we're going to have to act at some point. So we need to come together and find out a solution because we're not going to be able to, to tolerate it anymore. And that's a terrible way to look at it, but it's reality.
No, it is reality. And, and let me be very clear, we don't condone bad behavior. So if someone's doing something illegal, um, we would expect that they'd be arrested. Now, we know the complications there because you arrest someone, you're taking an hour of the officer's time at least to process them, get them to Alvin Esalen, if they'll accept them, and then by the time the officer-
Which is not the end solution that helps anybody.
Because it does nothing for anyone, exactly. So that's why we are trying to improve those connections with the detention center, um, to make sure that we have street outreach engaged where they can. It's, street outreach is not an on-demand kind of thing. So if you get a call about someone, um, at a local hotel that's causing something, we can try to get someone there as quickly as we can. But what's more effective for us is try to identify the person to see if they're homeless, um, sometimes they're not, um, to see if we can find them, identify them with our street outreach or in our database, um, to engage them into some type of services. Um, I think what we have been talking internally and we would like to, um, likely convene a meeting of, of different providers in the community pretty soon with city leadership, um, to really kind of talk through some of these issues to see, to make sure we're maximizing all of the resources out there in partnerships.
It is a, a, a very targeted community and it's been a pretty, pretty steady level for numbers. I mean, it's decreased a little bit and increased a little bit, but it's truly coming to a safety-
The highlighting of the mental health issues because it's really much more profound.
And I was, I was going to ask that question.
Yeah, and we, this is going to be a much longer conversation. I want to make sure we get through all the, uh, presentations.
Yeah, there's any squeaking here, don't move. Focus, focus.
One of the things that, uh-
Apparently Ed's chair is irritating Howard. Mid, mid, mid-meeting, uh, adjustment here.
Now, if this one starts squeaking, it's going to really be an old one. It'll be you if it's-
New chairs are out of order. Can't get here fast.
Yes, sir.
Unless, unless, not to that, that's, that's, um-
Yeah, we've got the different, we've got the different prongs in place, the justice piece, triage piece. We've heard, we've, we've listened today that there are three hundred persons, I think, that are aggressive and they have been active in terms of their interaction with CPDs.
Uh, that, I think the three hundred really is people who are, um, identified as what's called chronically homeless and those, that's folks who've been homeless for a long time or multiple times over a period of years and would have some kind of disabling condition. So those, those are folks that's going to be challenging to find housing for because they are going to be very limited in their ability to support themselves on their own long-term and, and often have very intensive case management needs.
Well, a part of that, I think-
The, I think the CPD list and the, the other list of seventy, seventy-four right now, yeah.
Well, a part of that, a part of that is reflected in what takes place on Main Street and several other places where disturbances take place. I've heard all of that. I haven't, we haven't talked a lot and maybe this is, uh, time for another conversation. The psycho, the psychological piece. And psychotrophically, if persons are in a place, in a dark place, there are going to be incidences of things happening on Main Street or in the vista or anywhere else. How do we adequately find a way to psychologically do an assessment whether, whatever the disorder is? And include that and make that a very real part of, of the program.
Yeah, that's an ex- yeah, that's an excellent point. So we have three, uh, assertive community treatment teams in our community and those are called ACT teams. Uh, two are at Mercy, the Mental Illness Recovery Center, and then one at Palmetto Health. And those are multi-disciplinary street outreach teams that have a psychiatrist and not a psychiatrist that sits in an office, one that's on the streets, uh, street outreach and case management. And, um, they have very low caseloads and to exactly your point, their purpose is to really do assessments and in-depth treatment, um, of folks that have very complex needs. But, um, even having three teams, it, it is, it's, it's very limiting. So I think we are probably at the junction that we need to kind of look at making sure that we're bringing all of our partners in to look at things.
Right, thank you.
Good. I only have a funding slide next, which is not interesting, so if there are other questions, please ask. Um, just, um, the, the budget where we are currently, we have one more month to incur expenses. Um, so again, we're, we're going to be slightly under probably in both grants, but, um, just to kind of let you know where, where we are.
Thank you.
Jennifer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Is there a way you could, about that, I'd like to, what you just did, is there?
That's the power point.
Can we get that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next report is an update on the Housing First program. Ms. Kristin S. Connors with Supportive Housing Services, Palmetto Health, USC Medical Group.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager. I know many of you, but my name is Kristin Connors. I work at USC Supportive Housing Services. And it dawned on me when I got here today that our program started as a pilot in two thousand eight. So this will officially be the ten-year birthday or anniversary. Um, we started with ten units and we're now up to over forty. So a lot of progress has been made in, maybe not a little bit of time, but enough time to where, um, we're really excited to continue the partnership and very thankful for your support.
Do you have it, do you have it as slide or you have it in a, like a PDF?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, good, okay. So real quick, many of you are familiar with the Housing First model. Um, but a brief overview, as the name suggests, we quickly move clients from homelessness into permanent housing. And it's nationally recognized as a best practice. Here in Columbia, we partner with the Columbia Housing Authority. They provide the apartments, they provide payments, um, for rent and for utilities, and then we provide the supportive services. So Jennifer mentioned the ACT team and it really talks about, um, hard-to-reach individuals, people who are very vulnerable, they're difficult to engage. So what we do is really have to accept the client's point of view. We patiently remove obstacles and then we'll provide ongoing follow-up. Sometimes if housing is not immediately available, we'll have to keep the clients engaged and we'll have to keep them interested and connected to our staff and to our services. I already mentioned that, um, the folks are vulnerable, they're difficult to engage. So we'll have to meet the clients where they are. We'll go to shelters, we'll go to soup kitchens, we'll go to the woods. And then sometimes we have to get even more creative than that. We'll go to doctor's offices, we'll meet people in fast food restaurants, or we'll make the, meet them while they're waiting for the bus. This really illustrates the low-barrier approach to housing first and it increases the client's interest and therefore their success. So I'm really proud that in addition to providing direct services, we value community involvement. We've participated in the police roll call, we've participated in provider nights down at the Incliment Weather Center, the point-in-time count, we serve as a mock access point, and Jennifer mentioned all of those in her presentation. We've participated in homeless court, we've had several successful referrals with our clients to homeless court. And then we partner with the Housing Authority to do a movie night, which is a good opportunity for clients to have a positive social outlet. Um, and we were thankful to many area businesses that donated pizzas and desserts, um, some door prizes. So that's something new that we started this year, um, that we had good luck with. Next, the team for Housing First, we're all pretty cross-trained because it takes a village. Um, we have a case manager, we have a HOPWA case manager, and that stands for Housing Opportunities for People with AIDS. We have an outreach worker, we do mental health and substance abuse therapy. We have a medical adherence specialist and this person accompanies clients to doctor's appointments. We get everybody hooked up with primary care and subsequently specialty care as needed. But this person, um, provides what I call interpretive services. And so if the client is not necessarily comfortable communicating with the doctor and vice versa, this person can help alleviate that tension. Um, I serve as the director and then we have a housing coordinator through the Columbia Housing Authority. So Housing First, at Supportive Services, um, at Supportive Housing Services, we employ a scattered-site housing approach. That means that units are located all throughout the City of Columbia. We utilize housing in apartment complexes, we do property management companies, we also work with private landlords. We try to sprinkle our units throughout the community and throughout all the districts in the city. We try not to have an overabundance of clients in one neighborhood or in one area. We also have fifteen HOPWA units, which is funded through the city's Department of Community Development. We, Housing Opportunities for People with AIDS. It's a specific funding source through HUD. Yep. Um, we have two two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms. So by and large, we focus on individuals, but we recently kind of expanded into some family units. And all of those units have a disabled person as the head of household.
So Kristin, the, the actual two and three bedrooms, those are families, that's not a single-
It's not single homeless people you put together? Uh-uh, nope, they're families. Uh, clients have to meet the HUD definition of homelessness, which means staying in a shelter or staying on the streets. So people who are staying with family members, um, are considered doubled up. They're not eligible for these units. So the good thing on that is really the people who need it the most are the ones who we're targeting, um, and selecting for the units. When people move in, we provide a starter set of housewares. So that'll be pots and pans, towels, dishes, cleaning supplies. We'll get a starter set of groceries through Columbia Metro Baptist, their, um, food bank, food pantry. And that's, I'm really thankful for that partnership because when somebody's lived on the street for so long, obviously they don't have salt and pepper and ketchup and flour and all that stuff that they need to get started. Uh, so we'll provide that as well. And then the Columbia Housing Authority will do furniture, so a bed, um, couches. We've had a lot of success with our neighbors donating furniture to the program. And that's always helpful, always needed. And the services that we provide are case management, mental health counseling and substance abuse support, medical adherence, I already talked about. And then we also do support groups. And that's a nice feature because homelessness, I think, is a very communal experience. And I find that when folks move into independent housing, there's an isolation that goes on in the transition. So people can come back to the office and kind of work through that with folks in their similar situations. For this fiscal year, and these numbers are through around June first, uh, we've had forty-eight total placements, nine new move-ins, seven discharges, and seventy-one percent of those have gone to permanent housing. Two hundred and fifty-eight encounters with outreach. On Mondays and Wednesdays, we provide walk-in services. So anybody who needs a place to stay, whether or not they're eligible for our program or not, um, can meet with somebody and get pointed in the right direction, whether it be a shelter, transitional housing program, either other, like Mercy and other providers that may not do housing per se, but if somebody needs to do their laundry or things like that, we'll point them in the right direction. The average length of stay is six hundred and seventy-one days, which is twenty-two months. So you'll see, there's not a lot of move-ins and not a lot of discharges. So when people come, they stay. And that's the goal of permanent supportive housing. So we're really proud of that. Client success, just this year, I made a list of things that our clients have done to better themselves. You can see GED, driver's license, emotional support pet, a lot of income disability benefits or employment. People have accessed medical care, volunteer opportunities, somebody left transitions and now goes back to volunteer at transitions, which I think is pretty cool. We've had families get back together, um, not so much in our units, but if somebody's been homeless for an extended period of time and we're kind of cut off from their family, they now have pride and they can go back.
Still an important American value, isn't it?
I think so, yeah. Um, and then substance abuse detox and inpatient rehabilitation. So to finish up, I tried to think about a story, you know, a, a really compelling story of somebody who's gone through the program. And I found this quote from our client satisfaction survey. And I think it does a great job of illustrating all that we do, um, to encompass meeting people where they are. A lot of programs, I think, consider housing the end game. But we really work to start when somebody gets into housing. We don't just kind of drop them, we continue to work. Some people are able to move on and find a place of their own and not need case management support. But a lot of people are not.
That's from one of your clients?
Mm-hmm.
That's powerful.
Yes. So, and I'll read it in case anybody can't see. "All I can say is that the program picked me up, turned me around, showed me how to walk, taught me how to run, and I've been running ever since, not away from my problems, but to the solution. It's awesome to be a complete person once again." That's it. Any questions for me? Thank you, thank you for your support. Thank you for letting us come and share our success. We're very passionate about what we do. We think the program is a great example of leveraging community resources and look forward to working together.
Kristin. Mr. Davis.
That number of, I thought it was either transitions or people that have-
Exited?
Yeah, exited.
That's just this year, mm-hmm.
This year. So, um, those are good numbers. I remember, um, the start of, of this.
Remember that? David Parker came and pitched us the pilot.
And, um, to my first knowledge, it was-
David Parker?
Driving through, um, town and listening to National Public Radio. And it was Tyler Dan, it was one of, it was new, a new concept. So the, uh- So the transition from this to independent living, if you want to call it that.
Right.
Is there a follow-along with those folks, or do they?
So after somebody officially vacates the unit, they'll get 30 days of case management support, but depending on the situation, part of the discharge plan will be to find out, do they need to go somewhere with a case manager? And if you think about it, if somebody's involved in mental health, well, there are case managers, you know, through those agencies, so.
Depending on the support services they needed while they were.
That's right. And it's, everybody came in with a long list of complexities, and so they're all going to exit with hopefully a shorter list, but still an individualized discharge plan.
All right. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Our next provider is an update from Transitions Homeless Center, Mr. Craig Curry, Chief Executive Officer for Transitions.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here, and thanks for having me and being able to take a little bit of time. I've been told to take a little bit of time, so I'm going to try to expedite this a little bit. If you hear nothing else that I say, thank you. Thank you for what you do, thank you for helping Transitions. We look forward to that continued support. What do you get when you help us? You get people out there trying to find permanent housing for people. You get outreach on the streets. So Transitions people are out trying to find homeless people to draw them in. You get the Incliment Weather Center. You get shelter beds every night, and we're like 99% occupancy, so we're full every night. You get job searching, so we're helping clients find work. And you get the day center, which not only operates in the winter, but like I say, it's hot right now, so there's ice in the day center right now, there's air conditioning, and there's water the entire day. So you can get ice at 10 o'clock in the morning, or you can get ice at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, whenever you need it. And then meals. We served 244,000 meals last year, and we did that with the help of partners like Salvation Army. Here's a summation of success since we've been open. We did hit our seventh birthday on Friday, so we had a party down there with the clients. We celebrate everybody's birthday on Transitions' birthday. It's too hard to do everybody's individually, so we just do them all on June 15th. And we were, it was a good milestone for us. We've put 2018 people into permanent housing since we've been open. We see 3,500 a year, so I know the point-and-count numbers, but if you look over the year, we touch about 3,500-plus unique people every year at Transitions. So there is a need. The 260 beds are full almost every night, and we have 50 great partners, United Way is one of them, and Mercy and Goodwill. I could sit here and name lots of folks, but they do a great job and they help us quite a bit. And then that last one, the youth number, we've had, we have our own youth program that supports what United Way is leading for shelter beds for youth. Youth for us are 18 to 24. We don't take the 17-year-olds. But again, they can come in in those 16 beds and get immediate placement.
Colonel, tell me, tell me that 6,502, what does that number mean? Because obviously, if you look at unique clients served, those moved to permanent housing, and those who've progressed and were positive.
6,502, okay, so those are progressions off the street, but not to permanent housing.
Okay.
So permanent housing to 2018 is actually a positive outcome, too. So all the positive outcomes at Transitions are 8,520. I always get asked about this, and you all usually ask it, so I just put it up here to save the question. The story about everybody coming on buses, I don't accept that at all. I really don't. And this has been consistent for seven years. Almost, the numbers fluctuate a little bit, but generally predominantly Richland County, period. Some Lexington, about 10%, 11%. It dropped once to 9%, but it holds about 10 or 11. And then the other counties of South Carolina that are not mock, or not Lexington, I should say, or Richland. And then out-of-state's about 10. It's about 10%. Do some out-of-state people come? Yes. Generally, they've come back because their mother grew up here, or they were children here, they went to New York, and the big dream didn't happen. You can see the gender, race, and age numbers there, and veterans were 9%.
Craig, before you move on, I did think about that question when Jennifer was talking. So the travel program for the next, so y'all be focusing on that 28%? Or, I was just wondering, is there, because I've always heard these numbers, is that a program that will be effective?
Yeah, we work with, so Craig has a really great outreach. We also work together to be outreach. The travel program that we're proposing for next year would work in partnership with clients at Transitions, but also initially.
We've done it to a limited degree, but the funding always runs out every month, so then it stops. So if there are more people and the family agrees, we don't want to just randomly put people on buses. We want some sort of family linkage at the other end, and we'll work that hard. I'm excited that that's a possibility. Okay, so we've asked questions here, let's see, I've got times moving on. The outreach piece, we do, so Ms. Wilson asked about, okay, what do we do mental health-wise? So I put mental health and I put substance here. These are self-admitted numbers upon entry into Transitions. So one of the pictures I want to paint for you is everyone at Transitions isn't really doing well. There's a lot of mental health issues there, and there's a lot of substance issues, and a lot of them have both. So these are very high numbers. So serious and persistent mental health is pretty much what these folks fall into. They need medication, whether schizophrenic, bipolar, serious depression. So now the other 66% have issues, too. They're being traumatized. They're just not necessarily serious and persistent health and need medication. They probably need counseling. I've had people tell me that 90-plus percent of the people at Transitions need some sort of psychiatric help. So this is a focus and a snapshot. So what are you getting for this, and how are we going to change and do better next year? We're going to help with the outreach, we work with United Way on that, but we do have a person who goes out to try to find the mental health. We're chronically about 14% homeless. So don't think that everybody in Transitions is at a higher level and all the chronic people are on the street. That's a misrepresentation. Chronic folks will come into Transitions, and we actually house some of them, but they are much, much harder. And a lot of it takes way, way more time generally for them to adjust and overcome barriers.
Craig, so first, so 34% mental health cases, are those actual open cases, or people who have mental health issues, self-admitted?
They have issues and cases.
And cases, okay.
They are getting help. I mean, the good thing is, they immediately must go to one of the providers to get help.
And so that's out of how many, what's the unique number, say for last year?
About 3,500 that walked in last year.
So we're talking about between mental health cases and substance cases, about a thousand people?
Easily.
Just over a thousand, okay.
I'm just, I don't, I'm trying to paint a rosy picture here, I mean, this is hard.
It's illustrative of the challenge, no?
I mean, there's a lot of folks in there who need help. The ACT teams have been mentioned, they do a great job. Mercy, they come in and help as well. So we're trying to get the chronic folks, the more serious persistent mental health, pushed into a permanent housing solution immediately. Having a shelter bed is key, because if you know where the person is, you can work with them much easier. If they're under a bridge somewhere, it's really hard to find them. And some of the folks are kind of easy to find if they're panhandling on Main Street, but again, there has to be some sort of willingness, and that is a problem.
And at the end of the day, the success stories that we're hearing today are great, but we still have that one population that we all struggle with, and we've got to come up with a solution for it.
And I'm with you, and I support that, but again, you don't want the 2018 people on the streets, too.
No, that's why.
Because you'll be worse than Miami.
It's great to see these.
Yeah, they're.
But at the end of the day, we know these folks are getting what they need, and we're able to reach them, but we got a group of folks.
Who are resistant.
Who are either resistant.
That's right.
Or, or just, they're going to be that way, and we've got to either.
But the encouragement here is, you do wear some of these people down. The 14% that are in Transitions right now are getting worn down in a positive sense. It's like, okay, look, I don't have to keep doing this. And then they start taking their medicine, and they start listening to the counselors, and it starts to work. It may take time. Everybody, it's not an immediate solution for everyone. So we've been pushing that and working that hard, the veteran population, we work extensively with the VA, some cost figures there. We're one of the best deals in town in terms of where to spend the night. Some costs, Eau Claire Health Cooperative, they save $7 to $8 million a year in charge at the clinic that they run on Transitions. Having stuff on-site leads to better healthcare and easier access. 60 to 70 tons a year of food that we get from Fort Jackson, we get from USC, Rawls Farm, McIntyre Produce, that's food that would go in a landfill. So again, that is a cost savings to the community with that number as well. Volunteer hours, we have lots of folks volunteering at Transitions, that has grown every year. And then clients in our jobs program as well. That's it, Mrs., I was pretty close.
Good job, Perron.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
I think it's ideal for, I'm sorry. I think it's ideal for us to say that providers, what you've given us this morning has been very informative. I think the larger picture, though, is how do we get beyond some of the hurdles that will continue to be there? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
How do we get beyond those hurdles where we, where we have the necessary psychotropic drugs that are going to help some of these our brothers and sisters? And until we sort of blanket them with the kind of triage care that is both justice-related, psychotrophically related, and until those relationships are sort of built again, and we are able to see a changing of the guard or a changing of the paradigm, we're going to find ourselves and we're safe. Somewhere I read that the homeless are always going to be with us, and we do a better job with that. Please, they say, and I'm very appreciative of what you all have said this morning, very appreciative. The numbers are true. Just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same sheet of paper, that these our brothers and sisters who are struggling with their own visitors are able to sense wholeness somewhere in there, somewhere on their journey. All right, thank you.
That's your goal.
Ms. Devine.
And I know, Mr. Mayor, you've mentioned, we need to have a bigger conversation about what we as a city plan to do regarding the problem of aggression and what's happening. I think we're all seeing it, and as Ms. Wilson said, I mean, every day, we're getting things. I'm calling law enforcement all the time in my office for situations that we're having happen at Richland Street. But I will say that as we have this conversation, engaging our partners is going to be important. I know sometimes I've had to reach out to Craig, and he's put his outreach people out to, you know, contact people who are sleeping on porches and other things, and they've been not always 100% successful, but has been able to talk to the people, have them come in and other things. So as we talk about the bigger issue and come up with some solutions, maybe engaging their street outreach a little bit more with helping us get some of those folks in the system, or making it very clear that, you know, what's been happening to this point is no longer going to be tolerated in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just as we close out, I wanted to say.
And thank, and thank you all. But I continue, I know we've had some great conversations the last couple of weeks, of just working together even more closely, trying to provide some type of a seamless approach to dealing with these challenges. But we've appreciated your partnership, and I think Matt's back there somewhere, too. We're going to continue working through this. Sarah, thank you as well. You know, when you're dealing with, you know, just incredibly challenging realities of the human condition, it requires a really thoughtful and compassionate response that can seem difficult at times. We pledge to continue being a good partner in this, but it's going to require us working that much harder, that much harder. I don't ever want y'all to think we don't appreciate the hard work you guys do. Let's all step up our game that much more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Go ahead. Missy.
Well, I was going to, I'm not going to try to top what you just said, but wanted to, did add that Ms. Sarah Fossett is with us today. She is the new executive director for United Way as of a year ago now, though, so I did want to make sure.
I saw you.
Right, but making sure everybody, all of councils had a chance to. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. We have another big discussion today. I know it was requested by council that we go ahead and at least put on the agenda for the work session, give you some time to talk through our fiscal year 2018, 2019 accommodations and hospitality tax, grant funding recommendations. I think the discussion that you all are wanting to have during the work session is probably a little bit bigger than just the actual spreadsheets, which will appear on your agenda tonight for council vote. DeeDee Fanning is with us, she's your grants coordinator and community projects liaison. DeeDee's worked really hard as she got through the process with the committee, and the committees worked really hard, as they always do, but DeeDee does have some observations, recommendations, guidance that she can give today, or we can, you know, just really take council's lead on what you want to talk about at this point, and she can chime in as you see, if you have questions. I know Mr. Rickman, Mr. Val, you all both had some suggestions, and I'm not sure if this is the time you wanted to get into any of that, if you want to hear from DeeDee first.
I think we should hear from DeeDee first.
Okay, very good.
And I want, I'd be glad to hear from DeeDee first, but I'd like to hear from Missy second to explain the financial.
The budget.
The budget.
Certainly.
How she came up with it.
Yes.
Good afternoon. What I mainly wanted to speak about, the current process that we have in place, I know there was some questions that you discussed in moving forward and how we do that. I won't get into a whole lot of detail, because I think we need to work through as we move into the new year, to go over, we do have things in place, the statement of assurance that it must be eligible expenditures that we use for the organizations. So to go over things as we go into place with the recommendations, once they're approved for the new year, it will be a process that we go through. What I have up here is just a breakdown of the slide that we presented previously with the committee process. We have the city guidelines that we currently use, and of course, the state guidelines that we currently use. I really wanted to answer any questions that you, because we had discussed it, but I wanted to get some direction on specific questions that you had for me and the direction that you wanted to go. You had discussed organizations over the 50,000 mark. Do you have any questions for me that I could answer and give you some direction on what we currently have in place, from what we had went over before?
Yes? Mrs. Powell? I have, I have hoped that we would be able to come up with a new way, a better way of doing the H-Tax, particularly the A-Tax, it's much simpler because it only has two agencies involved in it, but I'm not sure that's the will of the council. One of the, one of the key points that I think would have made this whole process easier would be to change the way the agencies receive their funds and how they have to account and how they have to account for their funds. But understanding from my friends at the finance department, that they wanna have all of the munition, uh, sent to them. And, uh, if we're gonna continue that, and if we have to continue that because of audits and everything else, uh, I think we're gonna have to recognize that DeeDee's gonna need some more help. It was a two-person shot before, now it's a one-person shot. And if we're gonna ask her to go through every receipt for ten gallons of gas for everybody that's doing this, I think, I think we need to give her some support. The other thing is, Mr. Rickman wanted to look at the requirements for, for reimbursements. And this is, this is off our, off our website, eligibility of the hospitality grant guidelines. And I looked through it and if, if the will of the council is that we gotta continue the way we've done it, I think this is not a bad, um, set of guidelines. My, my biggest beef, I think, would be that it boils down to it's what the reviewing person thinks should be.
Funded.
Reimbursed rather than a set thing. Because it says examples of generally ineligible expenses. And then it lists a whole lot of things. And then it, several places in the guidelines say that each individual agency is looked at different. And so they have the, the, I reckon it would be DeeDee or DeeDee and, and somebody else would, would have the authority to say, well, this is an acceptable expense and this is not an acceptable expense. The one that gets me the most is the rentals. Examples of generally ineligible expenses are rentals, uh, stages, tents, tables and chairs. Maybe tables and chairs I could see, but i- if you're gonna fund an event that's gonna have a performer and you have to have a stage, it looks to me like that would be ineligible expense. And, uh, right now it's not. So if we're gonna have, if we're gonna keep the strenuous reimbursements that we have, then I think we need to look at a couple of those, um, things. Another one that got me was ineligible expense would be maintenance and upkeep of property. Well, that is clean and safe. And, um, I don't see how we could use that as an ineligible expense and still say that it's eligible under the clean and safe, which three of our groups use. I'm a little frustrated. Uh, I, I, I don't, I don't like the way that the money has been divided up this year. And I sat down for two or three days and went through it and I couldn't figure out how to do better. There, there are pieces here there and yonder that I could pick at. But overall, unless we give them more money, I don't see a whole lot of differences that, that I would be able to suggest on, um, re-dividing the money in some other way. I wouldn't on the A-Tax, however. If you wanna talk about A-Tax too at the same time. My understanding was the A-Tax was to be divided eighty-five percent to the convention, uh, Experience Columbia and fifteen percent to Lake Murray. And, um, that's, that's not the way it's divided this year. And I'm, I'm gonna try to get three other votes tonight to change that back. So that they do have eighty-five, fifteen split and that the, whatever surplus is split eighty-five, fifteen. We went through this debate last year. And, and I think that, um, we should stay with eighty-five, fifteen. I don't have a long history in this thing, but that's what I have been told, that it's always supposed to be eighty-five, fifteen. That's what we use late.
We did have an increase, um, for the committee for A-Tax this year. And we can't go over what the organization has requested. Not talking about the surplus part of it, but just the original, what the committee would recommend. So we, we wouldn't be able to go unless they increase their request. That's one thing we have to make sure of when we consider that eighty-five, fifteen, or that we have done in the past. The hospitality guidelines, the eligible and ineligible expenditure, expenditures listed on there, those are what we have used in the past from what council approved. But it's been a very long time since those were reviewed again. So if there were changes that we wanted to, that council wanted to make to those, we would need to do that. And organizations would be held responsible to abide by that going into the new year.
Well, I looked at the list of ineligible expenses and I agree with most of them except for maybe the rentals and maintenance and deep across. The rest, the other one was staging. Got staging and/or, and fencing. I can see fencing not being eligible, but staging, if, if staging is what I think it means, if you're monitoring an event, staging ought to be allowed.
And again, that was, that was decided by previous council. If I'm, if I recall correctly, it may have been, um, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, when all of these were approved at that time. And that's what we followed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we need to revisit how we distribute. I think the requirements, I think that, you know, one of the requirements is supposed to be that nine nineties and everything are up date. And my audit, I grabbed a handful of them and that is not the case. I think that we are reimbursing on items we shouldn't. And that's a problem. And that's why I don't feel like we can just leave it open and then have to go audit on the back end. We've gotta reexamine the way we're distributing money. And we've got groups that have money in the bank. We have groups that have other sources of bank, but we continue to increase theirs. It limits our ability to provide, uh, adequate funding for other groups that are trying to grow. We've been talking about this since the day this came out. And it gets to a point where, a certain point where, you know, you need to be standing on, on your own feet. Not completely, but when I look at this and I looked at some of these reimbursables, I was very put away that I'm paying for somebody's Mountain Dew and their toilet paper. That is not to me an expense that should be paid for with hospitality money. This is the idea to drive events and people into town. You know, signage and, and things like that are proved. There are other communities using this money in a different way. West Columbia allows a new restaurant to hold their money until they can pay for the grease trap, a way to attract people there so they can create more money in the, that's an interesting thing. But at the same time, we've got groups, I went through, I mean, this is one packet of somebody's I went through. And look at, I got so many stickies on it, I can't. And I don't understand why we would reimburse for some of this. I think we have to take a serious look at how we fund all the groups. What the timeframe is, what their sources are. What, what are they spending the money on? What are they spending their other money on? You know, to me, if you're a nonprofit, you're a nonprofit. And we're supposed to be encouraging and there's a lot of. Somebody's calling me, they must have heard me on the news, on the microphone. But.
When the, when the committee considers these, they do, they do go through all of those things that, that are included in the application to look at who can be self-sustainable and, um, who, who really, of course, they all need the money, but who, who is self-sustainable? Who's not with allowing new groups in, um, making sure all areas, um, are covered and being diverse? And all of the things, um, the attendance, the, what it brings back to the community, everything that they have to compare and try to do that the best way that they can. And I think they do a really good job at that. And they, in the recommendations for this year, you will see some that were decreased, that they felt were self-sustainable and to give room for others, that were new groups coming in.
And I think we as a city probably take the blame for a bulk of it because we've allowed some of these expenses to be reimbursed in the past. We've gotta come up with a better system. We need to make sure that we're increasing that pot and that we're driving people to increase that because there are areas of town that we're not supporting as strong as others. And there are reasons for it, but it also, there's also parts of town that are, are, are thriving. And at the same time, they're, they're reaping the benefits and we're not being able to spread it out. Uh, you know, I don't wanna get into every detail, but it's, it's a pretty shocking story when you take the time to go through and look at this. And that's why I'm really concerned about just giving the money, you know, on a two-year cycle and we don't funnel through it. Obviously, we need to fix our system on our end, you know, uh, as well. So, I mean, it's a twofold and we've allowed some of it to happen, but I also think we gotta tighten up the criteria. I mean, if you're a group that's got a bundle of money in the bank, then we shouldn't be funding you at the same level. You've got other sources of re- income. We need to fund certain programs and, and so forth. I get that. But at the same time, it was never created and meant to just provide a cushion for everybody. It's supposed to help continue to grow and we need to, to, to spread it out. I appreciate the committee's hard work. I think a lot of what I'm talking about lies on our end of the table.
And I think the ma- the majority of the expenses for, the main ones in my concern as well would be the, um, programs like the Clean and Safe where it, where it may get more into the gray area. The majority of the organizations funded it, it's for media, advertising and promotions. It's more clear cut than it would be for the Clean and Safe and operations of those programs that we should, that we need to get a clear idea of what we need to do. And I am working on some things, um, to make it a little bit easier for the, the organizations to access, um, a form that they can fill out when they make the request so that it's not just turned in. They're doing this, you know, just for some organizations, once a year when they have their festival. And they, they're asking for grants from other places as well. So it's, it's having to get with them and, and remind them and help them. But working on, one thing I am working on is making that more accessible to them. For instance, online so that they can get that as well as speaking to me or whoever here, um, to have guidance on that. And just make it a better process, the best that we can.
DeeDee, is there on that poem anything that would identify the amount of monies that are carried over?
I think this is what you're asking, Daniel.
The amount of monies that are carried over and what is requested and what that percentage is and how does that percentage affect the amount of money that they are requesting?
Are you speaking of funds that they, they're requesting carried forward in the next year? We usually do not have many of those. If we do, it's usually, um, for a special reason. And they will send a letter and explain in that, um, whether it be, um, I know we've had one before that there was a change in who was over the entire program and there were some things that fell through the cracks. So they asked that they could, um, carry that forward to start the process again for the event that it was. But for different reasons and they'll usually copy council. If not, the, the letter that they send me, then I will send to you as well with, with an explanation. But it's a very small amount of groups that I see.
I don't think Daniel's talking about carried forward money. I think he's talking about like organizations that their event is so successful, they actually make money and then they set aside money, but then we also give them money. And so I think that's, that's what he's talking about. So to Ed's question, um, do we have some way in our application? Or are we asking for, um, what monies they already have set aside for this so that we know if they do still need the same amount that they asked us for?
We do. We have, that is one of the things we see in our application and that is something that the committee will see as well. And, um, they will cover that with the, um, organizations as they can. They may not give their presentations. So it, it will show that for each application.
I, um, let me, let me, I'm going back to, uh, my usual observations. And I still don't understand, uh, how the committee continues to, I guess, not consider the smaller organizations worthy of, uh, increased funding. I'm, wanna point out too in particular, but there are more. The North Columbia Business Association at Eau Claire Community Council. And I'm pretty much agreeing with Daniel, uh, some of these points. One, the intent is that you don't, you're not supposed to totally survive off of these funds. And that, um, if that continues to happen with this larger organizations continuing to get the same large amount of money, the smaller organizations will never get anything. They, they don't have, and then they don't experience the opportunity to grow. Um, and I think we need to take another look at that. And it's a question of how long are you gonna be operating off of these dollars? If that continues, newer organizations can't get in line, can't get, get to the table. Also, um, I don't know how to put this out there. I'm looking at, um, several of the minority organizations, they don't tend to get anything. I think the committee ought to take a look at that. The intent is that, uh, if we want to see other areas of the city show their wares, then they ought to have an opportunity to participate in these dollars that they can use to attract organizations, attract people. And also businesses, uh, look at areas when they're considering an investment as to what's going on, what's happening and whether or not that's going to be a pleasant for them, pleasant place for them to, uh, to, to invest. Until we consider that, then it's the same old, same old.
But it's about, it was just saying to me that it's about, it has to be about equity. It's gotta be, it's gotta be.
Absolutely.
That has, the whole issue of equity as it relates to new business, new organizations coming in. And I'm sure all of us around the table got organizations that we could perhaps look at it as it relates to what you just said, Sam. But it's, it's, it has to be an issue of, of equity. And how are we going to feed in the organizations that, uh, the bottom line, we just, we gotta start doing business as we, and I think that's, that's the bottom line.
Uh, you know, as I reflected just auditing and what I've come to realize is that a lot of our issue is right here at the city. And it's not, it, it, we've got to, to have stronger guidelines with ours. I mean, you just read the guidelines, food and beverage, well, and how are these people getting reimbursed? I mean, we've gotten complacent or more comfortable with folks. And I think you're gonna see a reduction of what's reimbursable by us following our own guidelines. But we need to follow it to be fair in the system. At the same time, I think we, we have to improve our guidelines. I think we need to look at all aspects because there's a certain point, you know, there's been a lot of discussion over the years, even five, six years back about, you know, you're funding groups, you know, where are they spending their dollars, you know? And, and, and we're investing so heavily in one group, but yet, you know, we're unable to, to help grow others. I mean, I remember when this was pushed by the arts community. This was a push to help grow tourism, arts and other things that became a funding. I don't think it was ever meant to be a permanent funding.
Right.
But there are also groups that, that contribute so much by what they do to help grow that we need to continue funding. So it's a fine balance. I think what we have for guidelines, and I think our process here, has gotta be updated and fixed. And, and, and I feel like a lot of it is on our side of the fence. And we need to send that message clearly because I think people have been able to get reimbursed for stuff. They've asked for it, we've just done it. That's a problem because that's taking dollars out of other people's mouths.
Well, I, I, I hope that when you made the analogy that poker being reimbursed for toilet paper and Mountain Dew, I hope you're just kidding.
No, I'm not.
Let me ask this.
That could be a dubious process, my brother.
If an organization has, shows a surplus this year when they come to the table, do we take that into consideration against their request? Or do we totally look at their request and not make a decision based on surplus? Surplus of these dollars?
It's taken into consideration, but what we have, it's also taken into consideration with the, all of the other aspects of like Daniel was mentioning, that everything is taking, for each organization, all of those are taken.
If an organization is putting away money because they have a capital campaign, that's a whole different discussion. But when an organization is putting away money and they're meant to thing, but we continue to increase it and we've gone from providing money for one aspect to another aspect, to me, that's an issue. And then when that aspect gets to a point where you're paying, you know, for expenses that aren't qualified, they may, they may look minor now, but when you add it up over the course of the year and you add it by the multiple groups, that's money that we could increase, you know? And you've got organizations that, you know, may have had some not great successes, but at the same time, I think we have an obligation to try to help them grow. You know, it's just, it is a fine line, I get it. But I think we're at a point where this has been around long enough that we probably need to have a hard look at how we distribute it.
Ms. Devine?
And I think that's one of the reasons we asked Teresa to put it on a work session, but even today, I don't think we can do all we need to.
I agree.
Because we need to really, I mean, we have these number of years of experience. We probably can get into it and maybe retool some of the guidelines based on what we've seen. But I would say two points to what Daniel said. One thing is that, that's the reason why Howard thought about a tiered approach. Because it's hard to compare a Five Points Association with an Eau Claire Community Council. You know, they both put on a day event, but they're different. Eau Claire Community Council isn't where Five Points is. Five Points shouldn't be penalized because they've been successful. But in the same token, Eau Claire shouldn't be penalized because they don't have the years of experience. So, I think that you have to look at them and maybe lump them together so that you've got groups on maybe the same level playing field competing. So, whether we look at Howard's proposal if we can or not, or maybe look at what we want to do to address that, that would be one thing. The second thing I would say for that though is, my one little caveat on people setting money aside is because of the way we do our funding and depending on when someone's event is, sometimes they can't rely upon whether or not we're going to fund them and at what level. And so, I do think that we need to encourage groups to get to the point where they're setting aside seed money for future years. Now, the question is, how much is that seed money? And are they, you know, setting aside, you know, thirty thousand dollars and using it for other projects? Or are they putting aside, you know, ten thousand to do their contracts because they never know what we're going to fund? And I think we've got to look at that in a different situation and ask the real questions as to what they're doing with their money. I think we need to, we need to encourage them to be financially savvy about saving money for the future events. But we also don't need people to set aside their money expecting our money. So, that's something I think we would need to add.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. And, you know, the capital projects, I think we all understand how that works. But if it's these dollars, if you're sitting on it, then someone that's new to the table is not going to be able to get any money.
But it's not sitting on it, so.
If it's a surplus and you're in line for additional dollars, it's a surplus.
Well, but I think you're saying surplus, there are two different things.
You didn't spend it, you didn't spend what you requested last year.
Okay, that's different. What I think what Daniel was mentioning, and correct me if I'm wrong, is like, so again, using, not to, not to put the, but using Five Points. We know that, you know, if it doesn't rain, they're successful. And so, they will rightfully so set aside some money so that they can.
Self-insure.
Yes. But so they can get things up and running for the next year. Because of, look at, you know, when we start, when we allocate the money, they're planning already for March. And so, they can't wait till June or July to say, okay, what's the city going to fund us? So, it's wise for them to put money aside. You know, we've had organizations in the past that hadn't put money aside and then we give them money they weren't looking for, they were expecting more, and they have to cancel the event or they're coming to us because they went ahead and had the event and had a deficit and they're coming to us asking us to pay for that. And so, I think it's wise for them to set money aside. So, that's different than having a surplus where, you know, they had dollars that they didn't spend. So, I think we need to look at that in two different aspects.
Yeah, I don't, I don't argue that, I agree with you. But I think we ought then to consider the circumstances. Rain, fine, but that's understandable. But if, you know, for some reason, you had a successful event, you, and you did not spend the dollars that you requested. If it's thirty thousand dollars, then that thirty thousand dollars that's sitting in the bank ought to be considered next year, ought to be looked at.
They won't get the thirty thousand dollars.
They won't get that.
They don't get the thirty thousand dollars unless they can spend it.
The money I'm talking about is from different revenue and when you.
Other income.
Other incomes.
That too.
You have to take that into account of what you're given. And when somebody continues to grow that line item, but yet their mission is strictly driven for a certain purpose and a certain thing, we've got to look at all the aspects of the organization. You know, and he came up with one of the big organizations before where, and that director's no longer here. I'm not going to say it is, but you know, they were making a quarter of a million dollars a year. And you got, you got a question at that point, you know, when you're paying salaries like that, do you, do you really need this money? Because, I mean, that's not what it was designed for.
You're right, you're the boss now. A couple of things. Number one, you've got to remember that the hospitality tax is designed to be given to groups to bring tourists into the city. And tourists, most of the time, tourists is considered somebody that's gone fifty miles. Our guidelines say people from outside the city limits coming in. So, some of these groups that are getting these.
It's a long walk from here to West Columbia.
I know, but you got, that's the intent. And the second thing is a little uncomfortable for me to be talking about what I'm talking about because John's sitting behind me back here and it's actually his idea.
I support that.
John's idea was to have, have a base funding for the big groups like CMA. I think John says we need to have a world-class museum, which we have, we need to have world-class historic buildings, which we have. We need to have a world-class Philharmonic, which we have. And so, he was putting those into a tier. Maybe we ought to ask John to speak about his thing, but that's how I came up with the tier, is to get the base agencies up there and treat them a little differently than the people that are going to need a little bit more help.
But at the same time, some of the issues.
We discussed it, but we never came back to it. And I'm totally in favor of that, you know.
Yeah, I can say that too, the tier concept. But I'm also in favor of making sure it's equity as we discuss it. If we got a tier here, what about the second tier? What about, what about those organizations who are very, very close to making something happen? And they, and the funding is not there. And there's not quote-unquote a savings account that is already established for them.
But nothing is, but none of this is guaranteed.
Next year, I mean, we could have massive years now.
So, that way you can be flexible when you observe certain circumstances with organizations and certain events and certain areas of the city.
So, we buy into the, we buy into that first tier. It's that second tier, those unknown, those folk that we have not done. That's the third tier on my proposal. The first tier were the big, big people that are doing things that clearly qualify for the H-Tax and do it year after year, but they need the continued funding from the H-Tax that they're helping generate. Bringing people in and generating it. The second tier would be the groups that are a little bit smaller. They may need some financial help as far as management of their funds. They might have a fiscal agent, but they're still eligible, all of it has to be eligible for the H-Tax. The third group, I was going to suggest they set aside for new groups that would be doing innovative things. And I noticed that the committee this year did put several things in there that were, I would consider innovative. And then the fourth tier would be the capital projects. And we have around five hundred thousand dollars or maybe more now since we went up on CMA. We have around five hundred thousand dollars that are circulating in and out. And as we roll somebody off, did we roll Adventure off this year, is that the one?
The capital project.
Yeah, we rolled Adventure Capital Project off at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I believe. That would go back into the pot and then we can take, we could, the council could agree on the next one that would be in line. And as the Centennial Park rolls off next year, we could have a next one coming in line.
I don't have a problem with the tier process. What I have a problem with is that I don't think that we have to have the receipts turned in. Because to me, what I've seen proves that the system ain't working correctly. And until that's done, you can't just let it, let it go wild.
I'm bowing to the financial geniuses.
Y'all are talking about, I don't think you're speaking inconsistent with one another. We're talking about oversight responsibilities and then obviously trying to be as efficient as possible and making sure we get some things done. We got a lot of organizations doing a whole lot of good work. I mean, some a lot more mature and larger and sending their own, some that will need our help crucially. That is going to require a much more involved discussion than we have time for today. But if we're going to, if we're going to deal with it, I mean, it's probably a perfect time, meeting this year to deal with it over the long term. I've still got to digest, I think I gave DeeDee a heart attack when I told her I was, I was unready to act tonight. And some of you have expressed the same unreadiness, so I'm going to digest this a little bit more. But the larger discussion is one we have to have. Yes, the focus on doing our due diligence, making sure that folks are using these funds in accountable manner. Yes, and making sure that we're focusing on equity and equitable distribution. Yes, making sure we're able to focus on not just the year-to-year issues, but also these, some of these cornerstone opportunities that give us a chance to really make some leaps forward, how we make these significant capital investments that, some that will only come up every several years. But it's a, it's important for us to recognize that all these groups have significant value. Let's figure out how we can do it within the limited means that we have, which I will say, maybe limited, but it's still substantial. I mean, so we're spending millions of dollars a year. So, that ought not be, the value there ought not be understated. Sir, Mr. Duval?
It sounds like we have a kind of consensus that we need to study the tier process and we have a consensus that we need to get more control over our reimbursement process, but we do need to have the receipts. The one point that we, I would like to clarify is the proposal also had a multi-year funding, a two-year funding that we would true-up each year to give groups, let's say like the Nickelodeon that are having events all the time, an opportunity to know that they, they wouldn't be dependent on us voting tonight because the budget year is going to start July one. They would have some certainty of funds going forward. It would be like a city or a county doing a two-year budget.
Are you suggesting then that they apply for two years of funding?
You could do it that way or you, the way I had envisioned it was, that's a good process, that's a good word for the city of Columbia. We envisioned it. The way I envisioned is it would be a one-year funding and then you would have a percentage of that, maybe seventy-five percent of that, you could count on going into the next year. And then the council at the end, when we're doing it in June, we could, we could verify there.
Sometimes you have to verify, yeah.
Yeah. You would have, you would have a base that you would know that you'd be getting, but then we would authorize another year. We would add a year on every year.
So, it would roll.
It would be a rolling amount that we would control every year.
And that, you would do that, but I wouldn't, I'd make sure that somehow we still don't give the appearance of a guarantee again.
Yeah.
None of it is guaranteed.
Yeah, well, there would be caveats in there as there are on a couple of cities in the state that do multiple-year budgeting.
Don't have a problem with that. I thought we were going to really deal with that model before we sat down today.
We're pretty close on something that I think we can hammer out, Mr. Mayor, with a little time.
But I don't think you can hold this up because you've already had the committee meet on these. I think that you would.
Yeah.
I mean, you need to set a time and, because we've been talking about it since last year. So, you need to set a time, say when you're going to discuss it, when we're going to approve something so it can be in place for subsequent years.
I think we're talking about eighteen, nineteen, at the soonest. I still have unreadiness about these, I want to make sure.
Yeah, 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 I have some.
We're still going to be about unreadiness with all of this.
Can, as we move forward on this process, Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Can we put a subcommittee together to work with Ms. Alonso and DeeDee and others to look at examples of what's not acceptable in our current guidelines or in the queue? But also create a better system for us of tracking?
Yes, a subcommittee of council.
And Ms. Alonso and staff and DeeDee and whoever else needs to be in. But I do think we need to have a revision of our process. And if we're going to build it into the tier, I think it's very critical that we do that.
DeeDee?
Yes, sir.
This discussion is about us, not you. You did a good job. You stepped in and did a good job.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Is there a timeframe that you all would like for us to get together? The ball or?
Well, I mean, since we're really talking about for next year's application, Stark, we need to have it finished before Christmas.
Right.
So that it can have plenty of time to be published and circulated.
You will pull out a cocktail? I'm not ready to vote on it.
But I was just saying we can hold this up for that.
No, no, I completely agree. So, you can't just be mad at me, DeeDee?
I'm not, I'm not.
I'm sorry, Stark, that was for this evening.
Not approving it yet, this evening.
Yes, I would like to know DeeDee.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I got it. Ms. Devine had something I think Mr. Stevenson was asking for.
I just wanted to clarify, it sounded like y'all are not going to vote on H-Tax tonight, but will A-Tax be something to take up the night? Are you going to put both of them off?
Put them both off.
Put both of them off tonight, you don't need to be here tonight.
Not unless you're planning on bringing us, you know, pizza and beer.
Well, I can always do that, I would be very glad to do that.
We're easy to beat.
Well, it's not very often I show up on the agenda of council, it's usually for some other nefarious reason than this. But I just wanted to know whether we need to be back for that.
No, A-Tax or H-Tax, no.
For either one.
Either one, okay. Unless you have other issues on the agenda.
There are uncomfortable issues on the agenda.
Might be fun.
My question just was for DeeDee and or John. I didn't see the application, so I wasn't sure. I know in years past, we've had some creative suggestions on how, you know, people are promoting the increase of the pot, people eating out and other things. I haven't heard that as much recently, so I didn't know if organizations were kind of getting away from that. But to Howard's point about increasing the pot, we really do need to push that as something that we're looking to see in what they're doing. So, I don't know if you saw it this year, are y'all seeing that people, groups are getting away from that or where are we on that?
We do, we do always encourage, that is where the money comes from. So, we encourage that to be part of the entire process that they do that in their event. And that will be asked by the committee in their presentation and also from information we receive on the app. On the application, we ask, um, the amount of food and beverage that was sold. And we have a three-year tier that we can see if it's, um, getting more attendance, getting more food and beverage sales, if they're, um, growing or if they're not growing. That is one of the things in the application.
Yeah, I'm just wondering. Yeah, but no, like in years past, like, like the ballet would do a thing that, you know, if you ate out, you got something. And so it, it encouraged people, if you're buying a ballet ticket, also to eat out. And it, it pushed that encouragement. And I haven't seen or heard of that as much recently. So I was just wondering, are y'all seeing it? Because I'm not reading the applications like I used to.
Actually, yes, we're seeing it a lot from the organizations that count on this money for their operations for the season. It's ongoing that you would have a patrons' table in the lobby for many different events, telling people where to, to go to eat, making, helping them make reservations. They pass out surveys. So we see that pretty regularly. And this year, as a committee, knowing that this was going to be sort of a, a real topic of discussion for council, as a committee, we asked Dee Dee to give you our procedures and policies that we used as a committee so that it didn't look like we were just making arbitrary decisions, but that we actually were following a process. And this year, we had twenty new applications, but not, uh, an increase in the dollars. As as a committee, we'd asked for a percentage increase year after year after year based on the growth or the decrease of those revenues themselves. And that hasn't come in. But we think truthfully that the city is doing a really fine job in meeting the spirit of the legislation in helping arts organizations, historic organizations, community enrichment organizations to grow and develop. And this year, we were able to give seed man- money to, to several smaller organizations that hadn't had that before. And seed money for us with a limited amount of dollars was really small. But addressing some, one of the things that Mr. Rickman had, had said was, do we look at, um, reserve accounts? If we looked at reserve accounts, there'd be absolutely no way that as a committee, we could in good conscience be able to fund the, uh, Gancock Club for their police support. But every year, that money comes right out of the H-Tax, uh, pocket. So, you know, we, we do try to look at it every way. We try to look at small organizations. We try to give them seed money. And some of the smaller organizations that get a certain dollar amount from the committee go back to council and get an increase. So when we see them again the coming year, we give them an increase over what we had the previous year, not what they had gotten with the council increase. So it gets very muddy in that way. And we also know in reimbursables with these organizations that we stress they can have them for marketing, they can have them for security, and they can have them for talent. And in some instances, which has to be discussed with, excuse me, with Dee Dee, would be for a marketing position. So we know how the reimbursables work.
Right, because y'all don't need the reimbursement. I think part of it was just by practice when it comes through, whether or not.
We, we, we really do see these organizations do the best that they can, even to the point where a lot of the committee members attend, attend organizational events. And if we don't see that that organization is even collecting zip codes, that's discussed at the committee. And that's a simple way just to, to see who's showing up and who's not. Or we had one organization that was promoting an event for the community, but was doing the event, was proposing to do the event so far outside the community that one of our questions was, how do you propose to transport people? What, what have you thought about for transportation? And they really hadn't thought about that. So it was something we said, please go back to your drawing board. So we really do review these applications in, in great depth and trying to make it easier for you guys to make decisions and determinations.
You guys do, you guys do great work. And I think, you know, again, we're talking about a, a positive tension.
I, I think it is.
There's a whole lot of good to be done, a whole lot of good being done. And I just think every, every, um, it's often, I'm not sure if it's every couple of years, every several years, we got to go back and make sure, you know, we're, we're doing exactly what we want to do. And sometimes council's priorities change as long as they're in the spirit of, of what we, of what our legislation intended. We're in good shape, but we got to go back and make sure that some of the accountability issues and the longer explaining issues, some of the ongoing equity or regional issues that we're addressing those.
One of those things in the infancy of, of the process was the staging that Mr. Duval brought up. It was at the time when there were so few festivals and the city had a city stage that the festivals were encouraged to use the city stage rather than, the mobile stage rather than rent one. So historically, that's where that's.
You've never seen it? Tractor trailer with the one walls.
Is, is Missy going to have that to fall apart?
I, I was waiting for you all to finish this portion. Are you? Because we do need to transition.
Session real soon. I thought, I thought this was the last thing. We have something else?
This is the last thing. I think Mr. Duval just as a part of this item wanted Missy Kaufman to talk about your H-Tax budget going forward, correct?
This one?
The eighteen, nineteen?
The June fourth, twenty eighteen.
Let's get those questions because we got to go to the executive session immediately thereafter.
I can wait.
Are you sure?
I think it would miss it.
Recognizing that our, our budget is based off some pretty, um, aggressive predict, predictions, I guess.
Well, this is just for the hospitality.
I know. I got you.
We're going to have another eclipse in, in office.
We are. Okay. Projections, I should have said, versus predictions.
Teresa, you have anything else before we go to the executive session?
I, just one quick thing. I wanted to take the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, when all of your colleagues are chatting, so I'll wait.
I need, I need good behavior.
That's all right. It's an introduction.
Got it.
All right.
So I think I have introduced Pamela to most of you individually. I've been trying to Pamela stand up. Pamela Johnson is our internal auditor. Yay! And she's been on board with us for several weeks now. How long's Pamela? Two months. Okay, two months. And she's doing a phenomenal job. Um, comes from Houston, Texas, what part of Texas? Bywell. Okay, Dallas, Fort Worth, exceptional. Yes, exceptional addition. We're glad to have her back home. And she has jumped right in to help us. I know that, I really wanted to make sure all of you knew she was here because this is a position I know all of y'all have been, um, you know, particularly interested in us having.
Yeah, sometime. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Pamela. So, yes, sir, we are.
All right, yeah, can we get a, can we get a motion and I think amendment that's a little longer than that?
Amendment, we go into executive session for discussion and negotiation of the proposed contractual arrangements pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two Capitol Edge, Alvin Glenn Rate Increase, Magic Ice USA, Calamity Canal Healthcare, Discussion of Employment of an Employee pursuant to seventy-eight-two municipal court receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to a pending threatened or potential claim. Brinkman versus City of Columbia, Waukamaw Avenue Speed Bus, City of Columbia versus Polaris. Uh, discussion of matters related to proposal location or expansion of services to encourage the location or expansion of industries or other business pursuant to seventy-eight-two diversified development, Juicy Spec Building and sixteen forty-nine Culinary Training Program.
And I've got one more.
Receipt of legal advice pertaining to threaten a potential claim, um, Setum Avenue.
So I'm going to second.
Any discussion? See, now with the previous question, Carl, Carl, Ron.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Aye.